All right, it's six o'clock. I will call for the Wells Springs Unified Unit School District Board of Directors. We will begin with the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For sort of our business, it's to approve the agenda. I need to make a couple of amendments. The first change would be to remove the kindergarten discussion under new business. And to add the contract recommendations. Uh, the contract recommendations were in the board materials this afternoon. So we just need to add that and we will need an executive later on. So with those amendments, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by George. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Uh, general public comment. So we have public here tonight. Is anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, uh, anyone online? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have a minute for March thirteenth and warrants three thirty-four and three thirty-six. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the vote.
Amanda? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Uh, personnel, uh, we have a resignation for All right. Just Amanda?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to accept her resignation?
Yeah, I think that
All right, all those in favor of accepting the resignation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimously, and a leave request for Wagner. I did have a question. How many, how many days, I'll try to find out, oh, here it is. How many days is for? So leave request?
Is that for the remainder of the school year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it extension?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to accept her leave requests?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by George. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we're gonna table the contract recommendations still after executive session. And moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Eric. I have just a few items since we, it's only been about three weeks since we last met. Uh, I do want to provide just a brief update on parent teacher conferences. I know that's last Thursday. Uh, as luck would have it this year, the only two snow days that we've had have both fell on parent teacher conference days. Uh, I know Carol and Cory met with their staff today to discuss the makeup date and I do believe they will be communicating the makeup date to families in the next day or so. Uh, they can maybe talk a little bit more about that during their principal reports. So we do have a plan in place to make these days up and that will be communicated to, uh, the staff and family shortly. In addition, I, we have a VITCAP cognition assessment window has opened. It will be open until May third. Uh, I had said this before, uh, hopefully we will get the test results back sooner than we have in the past. Past years, we don't, uh, we have not received the results until late fall. Uh, ultimately, you know, our goal will be to get these results back and sometime this summer. So we're gonna work with those, take a look at them, make sure that we're prepared, ready to go for the fall of next year. Uh, so we'll keep you updated on that. Uh, the facility condition assessments, there's a copy of both Middletown Springs and Wells Village in your packets. Uh, I will hold off on just a brief overview of those until a little bit later on, because I do see that's an agenda item. So I'm not going to talk about that right now. We'll talk about that a little bit if that's okay with the board. Uh, and then we have some just VSA, VSBA legislative updates. Uh, not a lot going on right now, just that we're in crossover. Uh, there is one bill that I just want to, you know, make it wherever that is around the PCB update. That is H eight seventy-three. And that is around the potential for a pause language. Uh, I know that currently, uh, Middletown Springs, their PCB testing window has opened. It opened April first and goes till June thirtieth. We have not been contacted yet by the Department of Health, the D E C, or Craig Starett from Harper Environmental, who typically runs a test for us in TRCSU. Uh, and then I know that Wells is scheduled for July first, uh, through July thirty-first of this. Uh, the reason why I bring this up is just that the, this legislation talks about a potential pause in PCBs. And what that really means is that if, uh, the, the total fund dips below four, four million dollars, the state would pause all testing. Uh, now what that, basically what that would mean is like, so if, uh, Middletown Springs is tested next week, which it won't be, because it doesn't move that quickly, but if they are tested before the pause, Middletown Springs would not be eligible for that pause. They would have to continue to go through the testing. Uh, we look at the results and then whether that there'd be mitigation or remediation and potentially any sort of abatement. Uh, if Wells has not gone, uh, been tested yet, the pause has been enacted, then they will not be tested. Uh, so if that makes sense to you, so, um, we'll wait to see what happens with this bill. We have shared our, our concerns with the pause and what this, uh, will do to our testing and our schools. And obviously messaging is to public around safety issues. But, uh, that is ultimately up to the, uh, the Senate and up to the governor in terms of whether he's going to pass it or not. Uh, so we'll stay tuned on that. Uh, the rest of the legislative is just a, you know, kind of a, bit of an update. I know that the one, uh, Zest two eighty-four that we hear a lot about is around the cellphone bill. Uh, and that is around just, uh, a, uh, developing a policy that will not be mandated, but, uh, will be, uh, suggested to schools. So we'll see where that goes and once we see that model policy, we can then bring that up to discussion in the SU. All right, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions? All right. I will move on to the principal's report. Last slide.
If I go first, I'm stealing all of the good material. I'll go first. Um, so some of the, uh, some of the things that have been happening in Middletown Springs, uh, we've mentioned several times that our fifth and sixth grade class have been working with Up for Learning this year, uh, taking a deep dive into, um, our school climate survey that students fill out, um, through the PBIS platform. Um, students have wrapped up their work with, um, Up for Learning at this point. Through that work, they've identified next steps. Um, there are some areas that they've identified through that survey that they want to get more information on. So they're talking about ways of, uh, gathering that, whether it's going out and talking to groups of students to find out more specifics. Um, because the, the way the survey is set up is it's, um, statements can be very general, um, and, and the students are interested in finding out why students are feeling the way that they are about certain areas of the building. Um, we have partnered with VINS, uh, with all of our students pre-K through six this year. Um, and at this point, uh, VINS has visited every classroom. They are continuing work with pre-K through two right now. Uh, one of the exciting things that they've done is they've brought in a stream table for our second grade classroom. I think it's been living in there for about two weeks now. Um, and so they're just able to look at, uh, how, how water impacts, um, impacts the land as it flows. Um, Carol and I have partnered up, uh, this summer and Middletown and Wells will be running a Wells Springs summer program. It will be based out of, uh, Wells right here. We've got our staff lined up and I think we're pretty excited about the opportunities that these kids are gonna have together. Um, we have, uh, Mike Doran coming to repair the shingles on our roof that were blown off in some of our recent storms this year. Um, we are looking at, uh, we've been working with Slate Valley Electric. They have been in our building, looking at, um, our capacity to handle air conditioners, um, moving forward. And just, uh, just for interest, we've also asked, um, Control Tech, who's in charge of our air system, to just give us a quote on heat pumps, um, just to see what, what the cost would be. Uh, something else that has been brought up about the building is, um, that sidewalk by the playground tends to collect a lot of water and mud. Um, and so we have someone coming to look at what needs to be done to, to fix that. So it doesn't become a bigger problem. And then coming up, a few weeks after we come back from break, we begin our artist in residency program. We're partnering with, um, Nick, Nick Snyder, Snyder, from Rising Meadow Pottery, which is right in Middletown. Um, students in pre-K through six will be partnering with him to create pottery that will then be used, uh, for community events moving forward. So we're really looking forward to partnering with him.
Let me just go ahead, okay. I'm going to start with the same Up for Learning. Our fourth grade had their final group meeting today. Um, and they as well are looking at and analyzing the school climate information that came in. There were a couple of areas that they really wanna focus on. Um, and so they're coming up with a plan with how they wanna move forward with that. Our Girls on the Run program has ten students participating this year. And they are in week four, I believe it is. Um, really looking forward to the culminating event, which is a five K race on June eighth. Um, our velocity program is starting this Thursday. So we have many boys that are gonna be joining, actually Eric with that. Um, teachers in three through six have been, our goal is to complete the VITCAP testing by April break. We have probably gonna have a few stragglers, so we maybe won't make that. But pretty much the students have done a really great job settling in and getting those tests done. Um, I know that our staff met today and talked about the parent teacher conferences. So families from Wells can expect a new signup genius. Uh, Mackenzie Gates is gonna send that out tomorrow. Our staff decided that May first, which is a Wednesday, they'll have, uh, slots available from three till six in the evening and then the entire S is May tenth from noon to three. We have, in the sixth grade, they're doing the trout in the classroom and we really haven't reported on that. And I feel bad that I haven't because the kids are really excited about it and they've had great success. They started with a hundred eggs and they have more than half that are still thriving and they're planning their release date for May, which will be kind of a fun event. And I guess finally on Monday, um, being here for the eclipse, we had some, we had some really fun activities that both teachers and students participated in. There was a song challenge of solar eclipse songs for the teachers. And, um, the winning class won cosmic candy. And then in the afternoon, the kids did stations. They played four square with different, a different theme for the phases of the moon and the planets. And they did an activity with Oreos for phases of the moon. They did an art activity. It was just really a lot of fun. I think the students who were here just thoroughly enjoyed it. And we were, our day started with our pre-K performing for the entire school, how the eclipse worked, and it was absolutely wonderful. So it was a, it was a great day. Yeah.
Forget the video next time.
Someone did video it and we thought that we were gonna have it, but it had, it didn't come back to us, so.
Uh, and any questions for either principal?
Eric, can I just add, um, because I didn't mention conferences. Uh, I was unable to meet with my staff this afternoon because of, of, uh, something else that we had going on in the building. So we will be, um, I have emailed my staff so they know what, um, what possibilities are. And we will be meeting tomorrow afternoon right after school. So parents will know before we leave for April break, when Middletown will be hosting, uh, those rescheduled conferences.
Okay. Question about the, what is it, uh, Sabres testing? Um, I, I know I've heard it before, but what is, uh, what, what does that actually test for? Talking about that or?
It, it really is like measuring things for like our SEL programs and how well kids are adapting in during the school day and kind of their, I really feel like it's totally just social emotional health. Yeah. And it gives us a good read on students' our, our kind of self-reporting, but then teachers actually give input as well.
All right. Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was kind of like the same testing around the, the fast bridge or anything like that, that, um, so the, the kind of data you get from that is less academic.
Oh, definitely less academic, yes.
All right. All right, no other questions? I'll move on. Uh, I think financials are in there. National. All right, so we'll move on to old business consolidation timeline. So at our last meeting, we had a discussion on next steps and begins, uh, financial information to the board. Drive. All right, discussion. All good. All right. Amanda?
Did you have something specific around consolidation that you wanted to accomplish tonight or, or get covered that we should discuss? Or what, what were your thoughts?
I, I caught some of that, but not all of it. Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry, I'm driving, I'm probably a bad service. Um, I just wasn't sure if there was something that you felt we should discuss and cover in regards to consolidation tonight before our next meeting, if there was something that definitely should be discussed now.
Uh, well, I mean, it's, uh, it's whatever, uh, the discussion leads us to, honestly. I think while we look at, um, the first part of our, of our timeline and looking at the, you know, potential cost saving or if there is any, uh, this is the information that we asked for. And, um, you know, where we go from here is really just the reason why it's on the agenda.
Is it the student staff ratio that we're looking at in terms of here?
Uh, no, not necessarily that. I mean, I believe this is kind of like, um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's based off the, um, what we have for FY twenty-five, right? So if we were taking, if we were looking at this for with these numbers.
That's the dot you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amanda?
So in the end, we really need to just decide if cost savings is our goal or if it's a different goal to really move forward with this information. Right? Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it. And, you know, this, this information that, you know, that we, we have here, is this just kind of estimated? I mean, is there, um, like how much flexibility is there in this?
Eric, can you repeat that first part? I only got the second, the second half of that.
I, I said, is this, the, the, with this information we have here, is this, uh, like all estimates? Or is there flexibility in, in this estimate?
This is, there, there, obviously there's flexibility in the estimate, but this is as of right now currently, what, what, what the savings would be if, uh, we would look at different consolidation methods.
Okay.
And that's, you know, going under the board's assumption that we, excuse me, that we'd still be operating two schools, two facilities and all the costs that incur with the, the operation of two facilities.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna take us off track and you can, you can tell me that I'm, I'm whack and we can move on. But could, could we quickly discuss about, um, maybe there's part, we can do this later on. But the incoming kindergarten class for Middletown is potentially gonna get bussed over to Wells. Can we explore that model and see what happens there?
Matt, I, I, I spoke with Cory and Carol and we are not going that route. Uh, we, we felt that, um, there was opposition from parents, uh, in this. And also as we, the board has repeatedly said over and over again, that, uh, as we're looking at any sort of consolidation, that this is just exploratory. And there, there are some families that felt that, uh, well, as we look at, you know, merging a kindergarten, that that went beyond exploratory and that the, uh, the board was kind of going against their word. We did not wanna kind of put that, uh, scenario in there. So I think it's something where we were looking at, uh, you know, housing our kindergartens in our, our respective buildings for next year and looking at what that may look like. And Cory and Carol can talk more about this. Uh, and then obviously, you know, exploring with the board what consolidation may look like moving forward, particularly around, uh, low enrollment numbers and how that impacts us.
I would lo, I would love to hear the feedback we receive from parents just because, you know, this is just a sampling of what we could receive if we do pursue this going forward. What, what the blockers were for those parents? Was it siblings that were in the same school? Was it drop-off times? Like what, what, what can we learn from this that we can apply and maybe have a plan if we do merge?
Sure, Matt. Uh, from, from what I've heard, and I, and I can let Carol and Cory speak. I've heard that the, one of the main oppositions was just the idea, just the, uh, the physical location. Uh, just the idea of, you know, going to another school and all that that means, but there's transportation concerns. Um, you know, those are the two main issues that were being brought to my attention. I know that, uh, you know, Cory, you had an opportunity to speak with families as well as Carol. You spoke with some of your family as well, so maybe you could speak on some of the feedback that you received as well.
And I, I think though, um, in, in regards to, um, that, that discussion, I think that would be better suited for, you know, potentially if the board really wants to hear what people think, that's an opportunity for like a community forum where, um, you know, where you're in front of people directly, can answer questions. And, um, you know, uh, which, you know, as we continue to talk about the consolidation piece, it's gonna happen anyway. Uh, but, you know, for now, uh, we're talking about the, the consolidation timeline piece, the, the financial information that we asked. And, and, uh, I don't know, uh, Matt, if you were, you were on, but, so we removed this, this kindergarten discussion from the agenda tonight. And, um, I think, you know, for the following, uh, school years, um, you know, it's definitely probably something that we're gonna be discussing further, so. But, uh, so, uh, going back to the, uh, the, the, the timeline piece here, um, I, I did kind of have a question. I know it's around transportation. Uh, it says, uh, one bus for each town. Um, and I'm just, uh, it's, that's gonna be basically, you know, picking up all the students from one town and bringing it to, you know, to the one school and then, right? I mean, I just, so, you know, when I look at the, the cost piece to that, um, I, I think that's a factor in, you know, deciding if, you know, moving forward or something like this is, uh, would make sense. Um, and I, I've always known that the transportation part was gonna be, uh, a huge expense, but, uh, I'm just curious how exactly that's gonna work.
Yeah, it's not really clear either whether that's using the same current busing situation here at Wells and then bringing students from Wells to Middletown? Or is it just, uh, from school to school and eliminating, collecting students from their enrollment?
Yep.
So we don't know that part about this estimate?
No, I, I, but I think as we were working through this, we, we were given specific scenarios to work through by the board. I think the, and so I think if the board, if there are scenarios that you would like us to explore and come back with the figures around those scenarios, then we can provide more specific numbers. But I think, I think that things have been very gray, uh, with terms of scenarios and, you know, from what the board would like to see. So if the board has specific scenarios around transportation that we could cost out and provide back, that, I think that's fine. But that, but it really would, just take a look at the cost of one bus moving between two towns and then two buses uh, between two, uh, two towns. And that, not knowing specifically what that would look like, because we were really running through different scenarios. Because we're, the, the conversation has been very, um, gray. There haven't been a lot of specifics around what this may look like.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, I mean, the only two scenarios that really come to mind is, to me, is, um, that all the students would be dropped off at the schools respectively, and then they'd be transported to, you know, the other school. So that would be one scenario. And then the other scenario would be that students are, that, you know, let's say are being transported to Middletown Springs from Wells. They'd be picked up and then taken directly there. Um, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I mean, but that?
That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think those would be, you know, two, like, the two scenarios that it'd be good to kind of pinpoint that cost.
So, so Eric, the two buses would take into account the door-to-door delivery. The one bus, we have more school-to-school delivery. I'll go with it like that.
All right. All right. So I think, I think, um, even with that, um, community feedback is gonna be pretty significant. For that kind of, um, decision as well. Uh, so, I mean, I mean hypothetically, I mean, at, at the least, there would be a hundred thousand dollar savings.
Two hundred? Probably even if, a hundred thousand if we stay closer to the status quo of the current situation.
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly, exactly. I mean, at least, and then at most, two hundred. So, um, Matt?
Yeah, hey, I, I think, I mean, we also wanna drive, this whole thing's also, you know, we wanna, our students, like, what, what, what are the best outcomes for our students, right? So we're, we, this, this plan was So we're, we, this, this plan would account for no, uh, no combined classes, which is a good thing, potentially. Um, but I would also look to see if we could, we could get further enrichment with that money. So potentially hire like a full-time language or a full-time arts teacher or something of that nature. Um, so, I don't know. My two cents.
Okay. Uh, Mary Beth?
Yeah, I just wonder if that would affect, um, our ability to provide after-school services as well? Um, I, I'm not too sure about Wells, but I know that Middletown Springs, um, it's a service that we provide, um, to families, you know, um, including mine last year, that was really, um, valued as, as far as, um, working families. So I just wonder, we do have this, you know, say we go through with the transition, we do have this bus and it drops you off right at your door, but there might not be anyone home. Um, so I just want to put that out there as well. I'm not sure if that would affect that after-school budget, um, as well.
Uh, point.
Well, you could still have after-school programs.
Other, otherwise, it probably would be, uh, would be less often.
Well, you could still have after-school program at each school.
Does Wells have after-school, um, program as of right now?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I think, uh, I mean, something to consider, um, additional opportunities. This would be additional cost as well. And I think, uh, something that, uh, would be good to determine too is if we, what, what, is it still worth, uh, moving forward with this, with the consolidation? If there is no cost saving? And, uh, I think that's kind of one of the questions. Matt, did you raise your hand again?
Yeah, I did, sorry.
Sorry.
So to piggyback off of the after-school discussion, um, a scenario where, uh, it's one, one kid's at one school and another kid's at another school. The parent has to go to both schools to pick up the kid from after-school. Do we bust them back to, you know, one school versus the other?
I feel like that's,
So Eric.
y'all figured it out down the road. That's not like really critical for making progress.
Fair. Okay.
I like the size of the classrooms. And when we talk about, uh, potentially the state, um, mandating students' staff ratios, um, this looks a lot better.
Amanda?
I think next month, when we look over the survey results, it might be easier for us to make a decision on what the community spoke back with on, um, as far as if, if cost savings or if a increased opportunity is really what we're looking for. So maybe next month, after we see that, we can look deeper into what our goal really is for the outcome. Cause the, with the surveys, a lot of the people spoke to what they would like to see changed. So that might help us.
All right. Mary Beth? Okay. Um, all right, so, I think if we, well, I, before I say anything else, um, did anyone else want, have any other information that they want to bring for our next meeting? Mary?
Yeah, um, do we, uh, you know, I, I talk to, uh, families day-to-day, just who I come in contact with, first and second grade. Um, but as, on, um, a broader aspect, does, do the communities, both Wells and Middletown, kind of know that we are speaking of the subject and moving forward with the idea of, um, consolidation? I'm not sure if anything, you know, other than, you know, just face-to-face contact with our parents and, you know, people around. But I'm not sure if everyone would know that this is on the table.
Um, should we get together and, and come up with some more exact scenarios? Would that be helpful, Chris? We told you how many buses, where they're going, how many classes we're combining.
Well, I, you know, I think there's a combination of what Mary has said and, and that. I think, you know, we're really, you know, we need community feedback. We need community inputs. We need to, you know, whether it be community forums, just to discuss this. And based on that feedback, then we can look at presenting, you know, the board looked at presenting some scenarios of some potential options and the pros and cons with each option, and we can work on, on that.
And that's what I mean, to, to have that information ready when we do start talking to the community. Like, here's, this is option A. This is, this is the result from a financial standpoint, option B, and so on.
So George, I, I, I think we could, you know, work on if, whether it be in May or June, probably may not be, a little bit quick, considering it's mid-April here, uh, looking at, you know, scenario, option A, option B. Option A is our current model. We look at, you know, current cost, staffing, we look at student, you know, student ratio, staff to student ratios, we look at elective offerings. You know, option B would be the model, you know, whatever model the board decides to pursue. And then we could look at, you know, cost ratios, you know, we could look at the staff to student ratio, we could look at, uh, so there's financial, but there's also the impact of students. And, you know, uh, with each option, we can have a presentation of that. So then the, something for the, you know, for the board, the community to interact and discuss.
Amanda?
Could we possibly just schedule a community forum for like the end of May, beginning of June, to hear from families and others in the community on what they might think the pros and cons are that they've heard so far around our discussion? So that as we're making decisions, we can prepare to answer their questions? Or maybe they've thought of things that we haven't? If we get information from them ahead of time, that might help us in some of our decision-making? Could we have a community forum like the end of May?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can definitely talk about it. I don't know what people's schedules are like, so. But I think that's, that aligns with our goals, more community forums than, you know, I think it is essential moving forward. Um, Matt?
Hey, um, just curious with, if we combine the classes and, and there's, you know, instead of so many, we, it, it might open some real estate in each school. Just curious if there's thoughts, um, of what some of these empty classrooms could be turned into, um, from that standpoint? Like a art room or a specific room? Yeah, if there's any possibilities there that help enrichment for the students.
Okay. I wonder if there's a cost to that, you know? Amanda? Amanda?
Sorry, Eric. I guess what I was asking was like, could we schedule a community forum tonight so that there's enough notice to tell people about it? So they can come at our next meeting? We kind of get more information and then have the forum maybe like the following week or something? So that there's a plenty of time to invite people and time to think about what we're going to talk about, time for them to gather their thoughts?
I don't see why not. We have everyone here. Yeah. Um, no, we can, we can do that on item thirteen, uh, later. For future meetings. Does that work for everyone? Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, uh, maybe for, uh, our next meeting, uh, having some additional, um, maybe information surrounding, um, the transportation piece and possible scenarios, um, that we could present to, I guess, the public for our next meeting.
What are those scenarios? Cause these are not scenarios that we, the, the board should generate these scenarios and have us provide this. This should not be scenarios that myself or the admin are creating to say board discussion. So we will cost out board scenarios. So as George had said, provide us with some scenarios and we will. So if your two scenarios are, option A is our current setup and option B is a pre-K K through three to pre-K four through six, as discussed, then we can, uh, work off that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's exactly what I was thinking. And then, and then, you know, and then some specifics around the transportation that we discussed. Unless, unless these estimates that are in this material are, are, are pretty accurate, you know, are pretty close, uh, as far as one bus, um, for each town and the pickups at each school and then.
Okay.
Or just one bus going back and forth?
Yeah, we, we, there'd be, there'd need to be a bus for each.
Otherwise, it'd take too much time.
Yeah. And then even with that, I would imagine there.
I think, I think more, us requesting more information from admin generally is going to fall after any institutional meeting that we have. You know, more details because we could come up with a bunch of things that aren't going to apply with, uh, the public.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Meredith. All right, uh, Amanda?
Sorry. And then also, if we could take a closer look at what staffing changes would need to occur with that pre-K, um, four to two and then pre-K, or four to three and then pre-K four to six, K to three and four to six. Um, we could look at those numbers as well? Like who, who may need to switch positions? Or like, do we need more staff? Do we need to move people?
That's what's addressed in the document that we were looking at, the overall numbers.
I guess I was just meaning like, overall, in that scenario, if we included that to have, that's all I was saying. If we broke that down, like when Chris comes back with the stuff.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, Amanda.
Yeah, I think, I think until we have the informational, um, we, we, we don't really have specifics that, um, you know, say warrants there, there in efforts. Um, you know, because it just adds in too many general things. Um, so I think we have the informational and then, then we discuss them as a board, what, what we think, you know, what we're getting out of that. And then we'll have something to be able to concretely ask admin to give us information about.
Yeah, I think that component's going to come later as well. It, you know, we're, we're primarily looking at the financial impact really, um, or benefit to this. Um, Mary Beth?
Yeah, just really quickly, like, um, you know, if I was just a parent attending this, um, community forum, one of the first questions I would ask is, you know, um, the question that the board is asking is consolidation. And I would probably want to know how that's decided. And I know that's going to be a question that we're going to ask ourselves down the road. But as a parent coming to the forum, that's one of the, one, probably the first thing that I would ask is, you know, what, what, uh, what school would, um, be tasked with what grades? And how that would be decided? Um, so maybe something we can, you know, think about in the next couple of months about maybe how to answer that when, when parents do come to the community forum with those, that really basic question.
Yeah, um, and, and I've already been asked that. So it, I think, I get that's, a lot of those decisions are going to come later. Uh, and, uh, and then it'll probably be something that is calculated administratively, would be my thought, but, um, but, you know, it's definitely worth having a discussion. So, okay. So, all right. So we'll, we'll have more of this, uh, on our next agenda. And really, uh, you know, just keep, uh, having a conversation. Uh, so we're going to move on to, uh, new business, uh, FastBridge presentation. All right. All right. FastBridge.
So, I mean, I can speak to it. I can get it started.
Okay.
If that works. Um, so I, I think that we were going to do this slightly different than we did, um, back in the fall when we presented data, rather than, um, going through twenty-eight slides worth of data. The board was given a copy of that data to look at. And Carol and I are just going to speak about, um, a few of the trends, um, that we've noticed and then just, uh, what we're looking at for next steps in order to go. Right?
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Yes.
So, uh, maybe just to give a, a brief overview of FastBridge, um, for anyone that's, you know, not familiar with it. It's a, we're in our second year of, of using FastBridge. Um, so it's a combination of a computer adaptive testing, meaning, um, based on how students are performing on the computer portion, it will adjust, uh, giving them harder questions or easier questions, um, if, if based on student answers. Um, and then it also uses, uh, some one-on-one assessments with teachers, especially in the lower grades. Um, and so the purpose of it is to screen students. We use it three times a year, the fall, the winter, and the spring. And, um, we are looking to identify skill gaps that students may have. Um, and, uh, we also use it as a way to, um, identify areas that we want to provide instruction for students, uh, in the form of universal intervention in the classroom or targeted intervention, sometimes pulled out with our interventionist. Um, so, oh, and, uh, FastBridge is given to all of our students, um, at both of our schools, K through six. Um, the assessment looks different depending on the grade level. So our younger students, um, are more one-on-one with the teacher. And then our older students have more of the computer-based assessment. So for the, uh, for Middletown Springs, um, just identified a couple of areas of promising growth that we noticed. Um, so in our early math assessment, which is given to students in kindergarten and first grade, it looks at those, um, developing math skills for those students. That is an assessment that's, uh, assessed one-on-one with students. I believe there's five different assessments, uh, each one minute each. Um, so we noticed that there was a decrease in the number of students who were scoring in the high-risk range and, and increase of students who were, uh, scoring in the low-risk range. So we had seen some positive growth there. And then for our students in fourth through sixth grade, uh, they take an assessment called auto-reading, which looks at, um, phonological skills, um, their spelling skills and their ability to identify meaning of words. And we noticed a decrease in students who were scoring in the high or at some risk areas. And we saw an increase of students who were scoring low-risk. So we had seen some growth there. Uh, looking at areas of concern, um, the two, the two assessments that, um, that are adaptive to students, we have a reading and a math that is given to students in second through sixth grade. that are adaptive to students, we have a reading and a math that is given to students in second through sixth grade. So in, in a reading, we had noticed a decrease in students who were scoring in the advanced category and an increase of students who are scoring in the high risk. So that's an area we would want to dig into more to find out why we had had students who were now being flagged. And then similarly, we saw in a math that we had a decrease in students scoring in the low risk and an increase of students who are scoring as high risk. So some of the steps that we would like to take as supervisory union, we completed a math audit with the All Learners Network. So we are pretty excited to take a look at what comes out of that audit and maybe identifying some specific areas of need, looking at specific suggestions that they might have for us. We would like to create a master schedule for next year. The purpose of this is it will, it provides us the opportunity to increase intervention for students because not all teachers are teaching math at the same time and not all teachers are teaching reading at the same time. So looking at staggering when math is being taught throughout the grades and when reading is being taught allows our interventionists to, to get into the classrooms a little bit more. And then just really looking to make sure that we are meeting the supervisory union expectations of the literacy block and math blocks. And then I would like to look at strengthening our literacy instruction by gaining a deeper understanding of the science of reading, just really looking at effective research-based reading instruction in our classrooms and, and assisting teachers with implementing those into daily instruction. There is a book called Shifting the Balance. They have it for grades K through two and they also have the book for, it goes, it's three through five, but I think our three through six staff would benefit. And digging into those resources and going through PDSA cycles with staff. So having staff identify a specific area using the resources to identify a change that they can make in their instruction and then going through a cycle of implementing that change, looking at the data, meeting with each other, digging into what's working, what's not working, adjusting practices. That's where we are.
Okay. Any questions? Mary?
Hi Cory. So you just mentioned that maybe an increase in intervention or the opportunity for intervention would be something that you would like to look for for next year. I know that we have a full-time interventionist now. Do you think that she's capable of taking on more or would that be something that we could have a point for position looked into or I'm just kind of wondering that maybe this is a question we can, you know, talk later on, just how, how you might go about reaching that goal of more intervention for, for more kids.
Yeah. So I, I think it's about, I think we can use the interventionist that we have. And it's just about looking at using her more effectively, looking at the time. So, you know, what does her schedule look like? What roadblocks is she running into? You know, we don't want to be pulling students from, from direct instruction in the classroom. When, when students are receiving direct instruction and reading, we don't want to pull students from that. It's important that they're in the classroom, receiving that grade level instruction. So if every teacher in the building is teaching, you know, their, their reading lesson from 10 to 11 and everybody's doing their direct instruction from 10 to 10, 20, she can't pull kids during that time. So just really looking at how do we schedule our day in a way that allows her to more effectively pull students and to push into classrooms, allowing her to maybe reach more students than pulling out one-to-one.
Okay, great.
Other questions? So I, I kind of have a question because we were looking at FastBridge at the supervisory union and that was for the whole supervisory union. And so I'm just trying to understand this a little bit more as far as, so like we look at I'm looking at the A reading two through nine, page 14, right? And it talks about the risk on that page and it's broken down district level, Middletown Springs and Wells. And then the growth piece though, it says scores of all students in group. And so I'm looking at the growth, is it, is it, what group is it? Is it?
So the group would be all the students who took that assessment from that school. So for A reading, you're looking at all the second, third, fourth, fifth and sixth graders in that building.
All right. So the, the left one is for Wells and the right one's for
On slide 14?
15.
On slide 15. So that, that one is Wells. And then if you go to slide 16, it's, it's the same assessment, but that is just looking at Middletown.
Okay.
Yep. And so you've got the two different columns, I guess, the two different graphs, right? So you've got the one graph that's comparing the fall to the winter. Whereas I'm not sure the one to the right might be more of an average. I'm not 100% sure how that second graph is working.
Isn't that the growth measurement?
Yes. Well, the percent, I guess the percentage of kids that made growth between. So they're comparing the kids and, and where their performance was in the first from the fall to the winter and the second one is looking at the percentage of kids who made growth. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Matt?
Hey, just curious if this is tied at all to teacher performance in terms of reviews and whatnot?
No, it is not, Matt.
Okay. Is that something we can explore or is that off limits?
I don't feel comfortable discussing that here, Matt. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And, yeah, so you already covered the the data analysis. All right. Thank you so much. Anyone else have any questions? I guess I guess I look forward to seeing data well with that comparison. All right.
Do you want to hear about the Wells side of it?
Absolutely.
Good. I think for areas of promising growth, really talking with NCER is actually here tonight, but I think implementing the UFLI has made a difference in early literacy instruction and we're showing growth and strength and foundational skills that we haven't seen before. And I think it's pretty exciting to think the difference of where they were last year at this time and where her group is this year at this time. So I, I think there's definitely a difference in, in what's happening with that.
Right?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, what?
Kindergarten.
That's why I said that.
Yep, they implemented in kindergarten. Another area, it was kind of an interesting area to look at for us was the CBM reading scores that there are growth patterns in certain classrooms that kind of span and their second and third, it was particularly second and third grade taking it, but their skills were all from first grade all the way through sixth grade. So there was a span of ability levels in there that I think is really interesting and kind of a challenge for the teachers to look at and see how they can best help kids continue to develop their skills. Areas of concern, we do have a lot of reading scores and foundational skills that's, and students that still have gaps in their learning kind of need to figure out how to address those gaps through intervention. I know that math skills and I think a concern is the programming from grade level to grade level here. And hopefully the math audit is going to help us identify areas of need and kind of give suggestion for improvements. And I think with that will be enhanced PD. One of the things I think is going to benefit us and help us out next year is we started the year without an interventionist and we did not get an interventionist until mid-November. At that time, we needed to provide training person, which was absolutely fabulous for us because small group instruction started. We were able to look at our data and start pulling for individual needs, but I think starting next year, hopefully with an interventionist ready to go, we'll be able to get our EST teams up and running. That's been a bit of a struggle for us this year. So I'm, I'm just hopeful that that's an area that's really going to help us better address our need. Like Cory said, the master schedule, we veered away from it this year and we are going to go back to creating a master schedule. In part, one of our classrooms because the interventionist and the special educator kind of get stretched so thin with the amount of kids they need to see in classrooms and stuff. We started doing more of a providing instruction in the classroom. So the interventionist going in and it seems like larger numbers of students can be seen at the same time. And so we're hoping that just looking at different and creative ways to be able to utilize people will be, will benefit all of our kids. I think it definitely will, but I think a master schedule will support that. And then the last part is Cory and I have spent a lot, we spend quite a bit of time together and we both were talking about strengthening literacy instruction and she had recommended using the book, The Science of Reading. And so we were talking about kind of working together to provide the same kind of professional development to both staffs.
Is that? Yeah.
Mary?
Hey Carol, do you, do you have a full-time interventionist at Wells right now?
We, yes, we do. We do. But she did not start until well into November.
Okay, great. And do you anticipate her taking that full-time position next year as well?
We anticipate having a full-time interventionist.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Chris? No other questions. We'll move on. Do the facility condition assessment?
That's it? Go to Eric. Sorry.
I was just going to say everyone should have studied this in their free time, brought it back, should have memorized for both buildings. No.
Yes, this is, it's light reading. It's easy to kind of leaf through. So everyone has a copy of the facility condition, condition assessments for both Middletown Springs as well as Wells Village Schools. It was in the board folders. This is born out of Act 72 and there are two primary purposes behind this, Act 72. One is to provide the state as well as the general assembly with a better ideas to the conditions of the schools within the state of Vermont as well as an idea about the cost. So as they're looking at ed funding, school construction, bills and certain pieces of legislation, they have an idea just in terms of where we're at, you know, in, within certain regions within the state as well as overall. You know, school construction is something which is being discussed every legislative session of the year. It's continually in the press. I do believe I had heard the other day that Vermont with the, you know, with the age of the schools is the second oldest in the United States in terms of the age of schools and I think we're in a unique situation where majority of our schools are starting to age out at the same time. So there are just some, some things for us to consider, both as, you know, boards as well as from the state level. The second part or primary purpose around this was to assist schools and districts and supervisory unions developing five-year capital improvement plans. And that's kind of where we're at. My recommendation to the board would be that myself, Carol, Cory, Scott will have a, a five-year capital improvement plan that takes these items that are in this, you know, this assessment into, you know, into, you know, in mind. And then we present this to the board at the August board meeting for the board to consider as because we look at budgeting for next year as well as future years. It, you know, I think there's a lot of information in this. I think it's, you know, for us to consider, but that would be my recommendation. But if the board would like to do something else with this, I am, I will follow that and do what the board asks.
I support that recommendation. I think there's, there's a lot of information here. A lot of terminology that I don't know. And even, even August, you know, I can understand that it's going to take time to really go through these and figure out a good five-year plan based off this information. You know, and, you know, just looking at some of the recommendations for immediate needs concern as well. Anyone else?
Sorry, Eric, I just want to say that, I'm sorry, Mary, but so this would be a draft, obviously that we present a draft and the board can weigh in, you know, obviously alter and adjust as they see fit as well. So it's, it won't be that set in stone. It's something we'll provide a draft to the board in August. So, sorry. Sorry, Mary.
Oh, that's okay. Just really quickly, I just noticed that our water system in Middletown Springs wasn't on the list of things to look at immediately. So I just really quickly reached out to Scott because we're pretty friendly. He's a very approachable, great guy. And I just said, you know, maybe we can get an update on that. Only because the last, I want to say, two or three years, school has been canceled or cut short because of various, you know, water issues that we've come across, either not enough pressure or, or, you know, whatever the unsafe environment was. It's usually, yeah, it's usually really quickly resolved. So hopefully that's not something that we have to think about in the future. Scott, I know, has been working on it throughout the year, but maybe something we can talk about, you know, it's just an update for the board a little later on.
No, Mary, that's a very good point. And I think what we have to understand is in these facility condition assessments, there is a lot, but it also does not cover everything. So there, there are items or issues that Scott or Cory or Carol might be more aware of that were not captured. I think that's where our five-year capital improvement plan will be combining the information that we have here as well as with the local information that we have through Scott and through contracts that we work with as well as through Cory and Carol. So it'll be a combination of a variety of data points and this, this assessment will be one of them. It would not just be this assessment.
I think this might give us, this document, these documents might give us some good insight about budgeting.
Yes.
And really upping our facilities budget line substantially.
So. Correct, Mary. Correct, Mary. And I think one of the, what the state was looking for also is as districts make future plans, they're looking at the cost to upgrade and upkeep for their facilities and the impact that may have on their communities as well. So that's which we will discuss in August as well, when we start looking at the five-year plan.
Communities and the ed fund. I said communities and the ed fund.
Yes.
So I, you know, in the meantime, you know, I noticed that for the, on the Wells assessment piece, there was the the, the fire alarm system. And I know that, you know, we had addressed this last year. And I, what, well, I didn't realize that it was, did that come from this report?
No, I, I think that was something which Scott and the building ministers had identified prior to this report.
Okay. And, okay. So the reason why I ask is, so while you're developing a draft for the, for August, some of these, I guess, immediate needed items, are some of those, they're going to be addressed or it well, or is, you know what I mean? Like?
Yes, Eric, I think that's something which we can talk about. I mean, I know that Scott, Cory and Carol, part of their, the budget that is approved each year has maintenance costs that they take care of. And so I think as they take care of these issues, obviously we'll keep track of something that may appeared on this facilities condition assessment that has been addressed. We can cross that off the list, but we're not going to. But we're not going to delay taking care of an issue. I think obviously there's some big ticket items that, you know, exceed forty thousand dollars that, and we look at, or exceed the bid threshold. Obviously, we have to come back to the board to discuss and look at going out to bid, but a lot of small, small ticket items we can handle, we can address as we should be on a yearly basis and ma- maintaining our facilities.
Okay. All right. Awesome. Questions?
The combination of this report and what you guys are talking about is the actual local information that you know about these buildings, I think is really helpful. The prioritization grade that they've given some of the things. I, I would think it's going to help you guys have the discussion and be a lot more effective in those decisions. Glad to have it.
That's got his work cut out for him, that's for sure. All right. Excellent. All right, so we'll plan on that for August. And then also this reminds me of our, our approval that the taxpayers provided for the capital improvement that we had on our during election, eating or election on the ballot. And so I think we had put in there that we could take that money and use up to, of this, I think like sixty percent or something like that. And so my thought would be that we would have to actually make that determination, how much money of that we wanted to use to put into the capital maintenance fund.
Now?
No, 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 like, or put it on the agenda. So I'm just, I'm just mentioning it. So, I mean, coming out of, you know, looking at these reports, I just maybe think of that. All right. All right, so if there's nothing else, we will move on to my favorite part of the agenda, policy. So we have first reads, E10, options-based response to violent intruder drills, fire drills and emergency preparedness. E13, prevention of conflict of interest and procurement. E16, security cameras. F18, local wellness policy. G1, curriculum development coordination. And then we have three policies that are to be rescinded based off of revised policies and part of the GRCSU policy service that was done by the VSPA. So any questions about these policies? All right, so we would need a motion to warn E10, E13, E16, F18 and G1 for adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Meredith. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. And then the same that we will rescind, one needs to be rescinded for the next meeting as well. B2, E2 and F10.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by George. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so let's, let's just, we're just going to jump around. We have an executive session, but we're going to come back to that and do general public comments. Tammy?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of questions. So, and I'm, I apologize if you discuss this, but I was listening to one of the Pulteney board meetings, and it sounds like, are they not paying for some of the busing for some of our students anymore that they're just paying for from Pulteney to Wells? And were they paying for the rest of the route and not going to be this coming fall? Or did I misunderstand something?
So this, so a discussion at the Quarry Valley Board meeting was that for the remainder of this year, that's the, the concern was brought to the Quarry Valley Board meeting by Wells residents around the busing situation where students were being bused home from Pulteney High School prior to the end of the school day. In order to remedy that, the students are taking the Stafford bus home. And we were, the Quarry Valley is continuing to door-to-door. The discussion is that next year, that's the, the, the transportation would be just from Pulteney High School to Wells Village School, similar to what they do with Middletown Springs.
Which is what they should have been doing, you mean?
Oh, I, I don't want to know what they should have been doing. I can't, I don't know.
So I guess, is that going to cause our, the town, the Wells Springs Board more money for busing, or is it not going to affect anything?
No, this will, this will not impact the Wells Springs Board at all. So the only, the only individual be impacted are, is just the families. We'll have to figure out next year how to transport the students from the school to their house, because there will not be a, a bus that drops them off to their homes in the afternoon.
Gotcha. Okay, and so just going back to the discussion of consolidation, has it been thrown out there what the savings would be to close one of the schools?
Nope.
So I, I don't understand why that would be.
That's probably got to be like a larger community conversation too.
Okay. It just seems like, and I haven't been a part of this, and maybe I should, but I mean, having half the school not being utilized, you know, and shifting kids around. And if, it just seems like the biggest savings would be just to shut down one school and consolidate if one of the schools could host them all. But, I mean, you guys have been the ones looking at that. So I just didn't know if there was that option out there too, so. And my last question was, what kind of trout are the kids doing in the classroom? Is it lake trout or brook trout?
That's a good question.
I don't think.
I think they are. No, I think they're.
So are they going to be released into our river after, or where are they going?
Yes, they will be. They'll be going behind the store.
Nice, okay.
Yeah. Stop in and see them. It's, it's pretty impressive.
Sounds like we got to do a whole hatchery since the, the wildlife, official wildlife is being shut down, the hatchery, so. We need some lake trout too.
I'll talk to the teacher about that.
There you go, okay. Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to jump down again to future meeting days and agenda items. So really quick, our next meeting, May 8. So earlier this month, the GSU had a discussion around potentially having carousel meetings. And the, the idea is just reduce the amount of meetings that administration are attending. And so based, yeah, the board meetings, board meetings, evenings that they're attending. So I'd like to, I guess, basically get also the board, if that's something that the board would like to consider. I think it was maybe during, during the months where there's assessments, correct, Chris? So like three times a year or something like that?
Right, the discussion is around the, the fast bridge assessments while we can discuss as an SU. And then we then go back and look at local districts. That was a discussion that was had.
Yeah, I think I think part of it too was before the SU board was going to consider it to get local input as well. And, you know.
Correct, Eric. I, I, I think there was discussion that if this were to happen, it wouldn't be till next year. And there's still a lot of logistical things that need to be worked out prior to this.
Okay. Well, it's something that the SU board is considering, so I guess, think about it. And if anyone has anything to say about it now, that's fine. All right, so we'll move on to community forum. Amanda, you suggested end of May?
Yeah, I, I, I think the end of May would be good. I don't know, like, what everybody's schedule is or day of the weeks, or I'm also only one person, so whatever everybody else thinks. Like, May 22nd is a Wednesday that's towards the end of the month if we still want to do the same day of the week. Or, I mean, I, I, it doesn't really matter. It was just an idea that I thought might be beneficial.
Mary?
Yeah, it would be potentially do one in Middletown and one in Wells. I know that kind of complicates things, but I know sometimes Middletown families stick in Middletown and Wells, families stick in Wells.
Well, I think, I think it also provides twice the opportunity as well, but. So then the May doesn't work.
May 22nd is off. Something that we can, that's labor, that's Memorial Day weekend.
Well, it's going to be hybrid. May 23rd. All right, well, how about this? We can, we can schedule meetings via email as well. So we don't have to figure it out tonight, but I guess what I would ask is, is anyone opposed to a community forum this spring?
I, I'm not opposed. I just think we need to have some scenarios to present.
I don't know about scenarios, but certainly talking points, more specific talking points, thoughts. Guy is sort of, I'm, I'm concerned about rushing it. And I'm also wondering why, I know summer, you think everybody's away, but I don't know. Cramping it in is a little, uh, not, not ideal.
Right. And so May, and then potentially June, board meetings, there's more opportunity to discuss and gather more information.
Yeah, so that we really, you know, have a, have like a, like an agenda essentially, we can.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Guy process of it.
All right.
Eric, for this board community forum, just, obviously, just let myself and Lewis and Carol and Corey know what information you'll need from us so you, for your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, because I know there, there's been a discussion around scenarios, the talking points. So just whatever the board needs from us to have, to engage community in discussion, just let us know.
All right. Okay.
Is that something you want to work on as a subcommittee?
If, if we're going month to month, like talking ideas, scenarios, but talking points, we're never going to get.
Well, that's what I mean.
So I think we need something on the side.
Whether it's a part of a regular meeting or before a regular meeting, where we sit down, develop some sort of an agenda, and then present it to the board and decide whether or not we're going to go with that.
Okay. By agenda, you mean an agenda for a forum, right?
Yes, yeah, not a, not a, yeah.
What are we going to be talking, yeah?
Uh, uh, something that's going to shape the meeting. Because you, you, you're going to get people who are very concerned, and rightly so. And just as we have been, we get a little myopic on, on things, putting the cart before the horse. And I think we have to, you know, look at sort of introducing broad aspect of it and then intake the different concerns that the public is going to bring to us, but not get stuck on those concerns. They're really important to hear and, and that's the information we want, is what everybody's really concerned about. But we aren't going to want to try to solve or come up with an answer for those concerns, Jerry.
Yeah, you know, my thought behind the community forum would be, you know, kind of like, this is what we want to do. And, you know, as far as the consolidation piece, and, and then just, with the, the benefit with the community forum is that, you know, we're able to have that back and forth, that conversation with. And, and I think that's an important part as well, because, you know, there, there might be, you know, like you said, issues that are raised that haven't been considered. And then that's something that we bring back to a meeting or.
Right, yeah, this isn't going to be our only community forum. This is, this is phase one community forum.
Okay. So
I, I think we also need to get the word out that this is coming, whether anyone likes it or not, and it's going to be mandated by the state. We're already rumbling about this. So
That's part of.
The earlier, the earlier we get to go, the more managing we can do to make it happen the way we want it to happen. Instead of waiting for them to say, this has to be done in two years. I think that's an important point to put out there.
So so a committee? Or is this something that we can figure out and be, that's my next question.
I, I, if you have room for the agenda on May, in May, then then we could do a training meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I say yes now, but you never know what's going to happen in the next thirty days. But I would say that I think I don't see why we can't, and especially if we have specific objectives we want to reach in regards to this as well. Perhaps you and I can hit together, talk about it, and have something that's more tangible at the next meeting that we can add to that meeting with specifics.
It would be nice to have an outline as part of the package that people could look at ahead of time. That'll save time during the meeting.
Okay, so as far as I guess the forum goes, maybe we can just hold off on that. I know, I know the summer months. the summer months and vacationing and all that fun stuff, they fill up pretty quick, but anyone have any concerns about holding off on setting a date for the forum just yet? Okay. Sounds good. All right. So we need to have an executive session. I want to make a motion that we move into executive session. Oh, Mary that?
I'm sorry. Did we already go through the second public comment portion?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Motion for executive session under personnel. Someone's here to make a motion.
I'll make that motion. You go into executive session.
Executive session at seven thirty-one. Thank you, everyone, for coming. After we come out of executive session, we will come back to this link. And finish out the meeting and we'll invite both principals of the executive session as well. All those in favor entering executive session? I forgot about that. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Guys have it? All right. After executive session. All right. So we're at an executive session at seven fifty-three by consensus. And looking for a motion to approve the contracts for Deb Winpenny and Lisa Whitman.
I'll make that motion.
By George. Session. All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Did we lose Mary or?
There she is.
Oh, I thought I saw her there. I got worried for a second. Mary, George has made a motion to approve the contracts for Deb Winpenny and Lisa Whitman. Are you in favor? Mary? Okay. Well, maybe she's having connection issues. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. And then someone care to make a motion in regards to approval of Ryan Lawrence for a one F T E P E health and wellness teacher?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Matt. Discussion. All right. All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Matt?
Sir, I'm for, I thought since I made the motion, I didn't have to say aye, but I.
I just want to clarify.
Sure.
Otherwise, it's a bulk call vote. All right. Motion carries. Yeah. All right. That's all we have for the meeting tonight. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn seven fifty-seven?
I'll make that motion.
All right. All those in favor of journeying seven fifty-seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.